I would like to call the meeting of the Lake Mills City Council for September 5th, 2017, to order. Please rise and say the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Knippel?
Here.
Okay, corrections and approval of the city council minutes of August 15th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the minutes from August 15th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or corrections? Seeing none, now I'll take the roll call. Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Moving on to item four, correspondence. Do we have anyone in the council that would like to comment on correspondence? Okay, Mr. Fields?
I received a couple emails. One was for Ferry Drive, that in the last several weeks they've seen some increased speeds and issues around the Barles Beach area. I'll contact police, chief police, and talk to them about that and see if we can pay a little more attention to it. And then also I had some more inquiries about the fire siren, so I will follow up with them on that. They had some questions about what the ordinances are for the city or why it's blown when it is at 6 o'clock each evening.
Okay. Any other correspondence? No? Okay, I did get a call from a citizen today, but I believe Mr. Drescher will be taking care of the concern we had about some squirrels. And so I will leave that in his capable hands unless I hear otherwise. Moving on then to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet on the podium, provided. You may go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Daring. I live with my wife and 16-month-old daughter at N-7780 Vicksburg Way in the town of Exonia. I am used to introducing myself as the newest Jefferson County judge, but things change quickly. I'm now with, upon the advent of Judge Brandmeyer taking the bench in August, I'm now the second newest judge in Jefferson County, having taken the bench on April 1st. So what I've been doing is making my way to the 27 incorporated villages, towns, and cities in Jefferson County to put a name with a face. I figure that if I'm going to serve as your judge, I need to be in touch and I figure talking to the elected officials and the active citizens in the cities, towns, and villages is a really good way to do that. So, I grew up in Waukesha, born and raised. My wife is a Dodge County farm girl, so for us, Jefferson County makes sense. I went to undergrad in Madison, at the UW-Madison, went to law school at Marquette. When I graduated, I went to private practice, made my way to Jefferson County in 2009 when I was hired as your Assistant Corporation Counsel, representing the county in civil and family matters. About a year after that, Judge Koschnick appointed me as a part-time commissioner, as a magistrate, hearing cases regarding pre-trial divorces, evictions, small claims, those sort of matters. I wanted to become a full-time commissioner or magistrate. That wasn't available in Jefferson, so in 2013, I accepted a full-time position in Waukesha, where I really rounded out my practice, hearing cases in all areas of the law, juvenile, all-family, pre and post judgment, setting bail, hearing felony preliminary hearings, and still the continued civil work. When I heard that, Judge Wambach was retiring in effective March of 2017. I eagerly applied to the governor's office for an appointment. After about two months of interviewing, which actually included your very capable and very good Judge Vince Guerrero, the governor chose me and appointed me on December 14th, and I started up on April 1st. Judge Brandmeyer and I are, let me backtrack a little bit, there are four branches in Jefferson County. Judge Hugh and Judge Weston currently here all criminal matters. The other matters civil, family, et cetera. Judge Brandmeyer and I here, so that'll be the rotation for the next few years. I believe in accountability. I believe that the past is a better predictor of the future than any words I hear, so I'm more prone to examine someone's actions in court rather than have them tell me what they're going to do from here on out. So I think in that way, I try to treat all like cases alike and strive for fairness in that way. So that's, and also in addition to being a rule of law judge, which is the type of judge that simply applies the law that the legislature has made to the facts at hand, that I feel is my role as your judge. I'm not going to sit on a bench and decide that I'm better than the legislature and I know more than the legislature. I'm going to rule any way I want because that's what I think should be done. We're bound by law and a rule of law judge is the type of judge that I want to be. I know you have a busy schedule and by no means did you come to hear me speak tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions before I leave you to your business.
So you do your work at the county courthouse?
Yes, ma'am, in Jefferson, at the Jefferson courthouse.
Okay.
And really looking forward to essentially spending the rest of my career here. My wife and I bought some land in Exonia and we plan on building in the spring, so here to stay. I know I left for a little bit, but I'm really glad to be back home and looking forward to the, working with you folks and being your judge.
I appreciate you coming and introducing yourself.
I appreciate you giving me the three minutes, probably more than that now, as I don't think I've ever done anything in three minutes. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much.
All right, take care of y'all.
Thank you. Any other questions and public comment? Seeing no one else going to the podium, I will close public comment and move to item six, the city manager's report. Mr. Wilkie?
Provided you the minutes of the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium from their July 27th meeting, the Lake Mills Housing Authority annual report, and the, a little bit late, but it was the Veterans Museum Trip, showing you what the Club 55 is doing as far as senior citizens' projects in the area. And they continue to provide a lot of options. Other than that, I don't have anything unless there are any questions.
I was hoping to hear something about our goal session.
I think it's gonna be, we'll talk, we'll talk about it at the end of the meeting on if we want to have it at the end of the next meeting or have a special meeting. Because, well, we have a lot to cram in at the next meeting, I think.
Yeah, I'm thinking a separate meeting like we've done before.
Yeah.
So we can actually think about our goals.
Yeah.
Instead of thinking about our business.
I've asked all the department heads this plan to attend, and we've also started looking at some strategic issues that we might think about bringing up, so not dealing with them. So other than that.
Okay. Seeing no other comments from the council, I'll move to number seven, acceptance of minutes of the library board for July 17th, 2017. They will be placed on file. And under item eight, council business, board and committee appointments, we, I do have one appointment I'd like to make tonight to Planning Commission, Gregory Koots, who did come to the meeting tonight, is sitting in the audience. And he, if the council approves, I would like to appoint him to the Planning Commission. Does that go to the board? Yes?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I move confirmation of Gregory Koots for Plan Commission member.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? You should have gotten information about him in your packets and so, okay, would you call the roll, please? Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay, and Greg, the meetings are the fourth Tuesday of the month and...
He should get notification ahead of time.
Yes, and he will also get a...
Yes, he will get an iPad.
I'll be contacting you to set up, to set up, maybe actually an iPad, that's how you receive your documentation, and then we also mail out a paper agenda. So I'll get ahold of you tomorrow or Thursday.
Thank you for volunteering.
And we don't get, we don't have to cut down so many trees like we used to for our meetings with the iPad, so it really is a savings, so, well, let, give me a call if you have questions or call the city if you have questions and like Misty said, call and set up a time to take care of the loose ends. All right, thank you. All right, miscellaneous licenses, tavern operators licenses, would you read those names, please?
We didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote? Didn't we vote? Yes, did we vote on Greg?
On Greg, yes, we did.
Yes, we did. Okay, got it, all right.
It was unanimous.
No, that's okay.
It's just moving too fast.
Yes, I'm just zipping her along here. Okay, would you read the people who want licenses?
Tavern operators license applications from Ismail Lamani, Trevor Woody, and Aiden Cruz.
Okay, and I will accept a motion regarding those licenses.
I'll make a motion to approve those three individuals for tavern operator licenses.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, call the question on that. Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay, thank you. Item C, Resolution 1735, reduction of bond for sanitary sewer improvements at Shorewood Hills Northwest. And let me get my, so, would you read the title, please?
Resolution 17-35, release of letter of credit, Shorewood Hills Northwest subdivision.
And Steve, would you like to make any comments on that?
At the last meeting, you accepted the public improvements. We went through and made sure that all the details were covered and I recommend that we release, release the letter of credit.
Is the guarantee period passed?
No, it's not. It will still have to be guaranteed.
Don't we usually retain a portion of the letter of credit until that's up or not?
Yes, we do. That's why, that's why I said the portion, there will still have to be a guarantee, but it's, it's not the full amount that we have now. We didn't have any reduction in the letter of credit at all.
Okay, but if we release the letter of credit, then we have nothing.
Right, but we'll get a guarantee from the contractor.
Okay.
Should we do that first?
We probably don't know a dollar amount to, to retain. Sometimes in the past, I know we've, we've reduced letter of credit by retaining a certain dollar amount at the end besides, you know, instead of releasing it, but...
I went through all of them and we generally have released the letter of credit and maintained a warranty. And except for ones that were constructed for a long time, so like in the ridge where they had been constructed for years and we finally accepted them, we just accepted them without a warranty. So I'm assuming that the developer has to put up a warranty that's separate from the letter of credit or is somehow a, a letter of credit, but all the ones that I researched in the past, there was a release of the letter of credit.
Yeah, ultimately, there always has been, but there's usually an interim one that reduces it. But maybe we could just add a clause to the release resolution that says it's contingent on a satisfactory financial guarantee placed for the guarantee purpose.
That'd be fine.
Would you like to make that motion?
Okay, I move that we add an extra whereas the letter of credit is released contingent on the acceptance of a separate financial guarantee for guarantee purposes for the sewer.
Second.
Were you able to get what you need?
I've got some notes, but I can go back and get the, the exact wording on it, so I can proceed with the rule, unless you have more you'd like to say.
Yeah, I'm not married to any particular language, so I'll leave it up to you and Dan to fashion it, but that's the gist of it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the resolution, and I would assume this whereas would be at the end of the whereses?
Yeah.
Okay, so, any more discussion on that item? Okay, let's make a call, roll call on the amendment. Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Okay, any discussion on the resolution as amended? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the resolution as amended.
I don't have a motion.
Make a motion.
Oh, we didn't have a motion? Ooh, that was messy. Okay, let's go back. We need to make a motion for the resolution, then we need to do the amendment.
So, no.
Okay, so I have a motion. Are you a second for the main motion?
We only, we need to do the amendments first, but now...
The motion was amended, and that's what was just voted on, that was my understanding.
Yep, and now we're just gonna vote on the amended.
Correct, so just a motion to, well, I don't know that you even need another motion. We can vote on the amended mo, or the amended resolution right now.
Okay.
Okay.
So it doesn't need a motion, a second, and then...
Formalize it, do a motion and a second.
Do the motion and the second to pass the amended motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's...
Okay, so I think Steve...
So we do have what we need, right?
Well, someone seconded it. We need a second.
And I'll second that motion of amendment. I'm not gonna dance.
I'm gonna look at the tape on this one. Okay, so now we have the main motion as amended.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good, let's, no discussion other than that? Okay, then call the roll. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Moving to item 8D, Discussion and Decision on Intergovernmental Agreement, JCEDC. And let me get back to that item on my computer. Would you read the title for that motion, please?
City Council Motion 17-9-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Lake Mills and Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium.
Okay, is there a motion for this? Someone wanna make a motion, please?
I move adoption of motion 17911.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, now we can discuss this. Steve, do you want to say something about it?
We reviewed this at the last meeting.
Right.
We actually approved it. The county board, all the cities and villages approved it, got sent to the county board. The county board wanted us to deal, send it back to JCEDC to deal with one paragraph. That paragraph dealt with appointments by cities and villages that were, in addition to the current and why we weren't using them currently, no city had made any appointments or village. And as such, the JCEDC recommended just eliminating that paragraph and sending it back to the county board. The Glacial Heritage Development Partnership essentially covers that whole spectrum of what used to be that appointment area, and they have more involvement in the program and so they like it better. So it was, it was just, it made sense not to go back to the old process, but to use the Glacial Heritage Development Partnership, which hopefully will have a new name.
So in a way, it's housekeeping?
Pardon? Yes, it's housekeeping.
It's housekeep.
It's, it's again reviewing the contract, the agreement, because it is being modified with one paragraph being removed. Unless, hope the county board accepts it this time after all the cities have to go through and approve it again, 'cause then I don't want to see it come back again.
Does anybody in the council have a question?
So, we can safely say that the, if I can find all my stuff here, that the, the Glacial Heritage Development... Does contain some or all of the individuals that were listed in paragraph four to six, so folks from the agribusiness, banking, real estate, chamber of commerce.
I know it covers a lot of banking and a lot of real estate, a lot of hospitals, it covers a very significant amount of manufacturing. I don't know that agribusiness has covered as much, Crave Brothers is involved.
Yeah.
And they're pretty significant agricultural. So yeah, they weren't as interested, they, they contributed, we offered them a seat, they turned it down, so, but that's, you know, that's all. That's kind of what happened in the past, too.
I can also make the assumption that it really wasn't manned or staffed at all except for the Glacial Heritage Group.
Well, this organization has been in place for about 15 years now, and when it was originally structured, it covered a really broad spectrum of concepts. And over the years, it's been kind of, the focus has been kind of narrowed and reconstructed, and so a lot of the people who were originally on it kind of fell by the wayside and there weren't any new appointments. And then we shifted gears and went with the Glacial Heritage Development Partnership, and this time they put up money. So if you're, get a board seat on the Glacial Heritage, you're putting up $5,000 at a minimum per year. And that gens to, that tends to make them more active in the organization.
It also explains why some people say no.
I have to, I have to say, though, that Crave Brothers did put up $25,000 a year, that's why we did offer them a seat.
Okay, I'm just trying to picture it in my mind whether or not it's getting a full cross-section of everybody that should be involved in economic development, especially if they're paying to get in there. And before, it could just be a volunteer, somebody that wanted to assist in this. We expect, I think this is better than...
I will guarantee you it's far better.
Okay.
First of all, they have a significant interest and a significant impact. When, some of them are putting up $250,000, they are very interested.
So where does that money go that they're putting up?
It goes to fund programs that do things like train employees, do labor shed studies, concentrate on making sure that, that the goals, there are goals that have been listed in the Thrive Package that I've been handing out on a regular basis, and each, and they each have a budgeted item, and that money goes towards that. So the way it's split is, the cities fund the employees so that there's a set of employees there, and then the actual programs that are implemented are funded by the Glacial Heritage. And so it's kind of a split.
Yeah, so is there any way, or do they do any type of grants or things like that for communities such as Lake Mills, say, our EDC wanted to do some studies? Do they provide any support for that?
No, no, they, they do not. Now, if Eston Engineering wanted to do a study, they would put money into that.
Okay.
And as a, and what they look at is a countywide, a bigger county perspective, so when they're, they try not to get into Lake Mills specifically, they try and deal in a broader perspective, and then they let Lake Mills kind of focus in when we get it to that point where it's, they're interested in Lake Mills, then we get to carry the ball. But as, as far as a broader spectrum act, set of activities, they are really focused on Dodge and Jefferson County and try not to get into the, it all has to be about Lake Mills or it all has to be about Jefferson, and they're all, you know, they try and stay Jefferson and Dodge County.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So in other words, what's best for the county, not just what's best for the municipality?
Yeah, even the businesses tend to understand that when the water's higher, all ships float higher. So there's, if there's something that's going into Watertown, all the cities in Jefferson and Dodge County have the opportunity to benefit. So it's not, tries not to be as parochial as cities tend to be concentrated. And so I, I think you note that the governor's office has been pushing for at least five, six years now, that it's more regional and less local. And so this is kind of following in that. We didn't really fall into the Mad Rep real tight. We have some association with Mad Rep, we have some association with the Milwaukee Seven, N7, and so we cross back and forth... And so we cross back and forth between those two organizations. So it's kind of like, you know, trying to make sure that we have an organization that's in place that can coordinate between the two and still be our own. And it, and then it coordinates with the state a lot. So I know Diane's seen several of the emails that we get and the packages that we've put together and send out to all kinds of organizations, businesses, letting them know what's available here and that we qualify for what they're looking for, and that if they're interested, good contact, and those types of things.
I have a question, just to clarify what my head. There are three reps from the county as a whole.
Yes, I'm the J C E D C.
And then each of the municipalities has one rep. Are you our rep?
Yes, I've been our rep.
Okay.
For seventeen years.
Do all municipalities participate, or do only some?
Only the ones that pay.
Pay the money. Okay, what kind of percentage is there of municipalities at this time? Like fifty percent of the possible ones? 'Cause there are little municipalities and big municipalities.
Municipality covers a broader spectrum than I might wanna say. All the cities participate.
Okay.
One village participates, and that's Cambridge, which is actually...
In Dane County?
Yeah, mainly in Dane County. Same with Whitewater, it participates, but it's mainly in Walworth. You know, so nothing like Sullivan or Palmyra, and none of those participate. Exonia doesn't participate. No towns participate, so they might be considered a municipality, but they don't participate.
Okay, okay.
Again, it's, you know, the cities stood up and basically carried the brunt of the activity in Jefferson County. Have made a significant cooperative effort across the board, even though there hasn't always been participation. The county does contribute a significant amount, but of course, the, the cities make up the vast majority of the population in Jefferson County, so...
So we will see this item on our budget tonight. Okay. So, all right. Any other questions? And I've lost track. Do we, we have our motion, right? Okay, good. I'm asking this time. Okay, is there any other discussion? All right, since we have our motion and a second, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Fritch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay. And that moves us on to item E, the presentation and discussion of the 2018 proposed city manager's general fund and utility budgets. So since tonight is our first budget discussion, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wilkie, since he would like to explain to us how he wants us to look at this, right? Does that sound good?
Close enough, I guess.
Or is there something else you'd like me to say?
Nope, no. I guess that's not how you should look at it, but one information I've provided that you can use to make your decisions.
Right. And we do have all of the budget because of our nice computers, so everything is right at our fingertips.
As is typical, we have, as long as I can remember, distributed the city manager's proposed budget first meeting in September. So it's been, as long as I can remember, which is at least seventeen years. Might've been before that, too, right, Vicki?
Yeah, I think so. I think we started that maybe about twenty-four years ago.
Yeah. The process is basically that I put together the proposed budget, which is to help decision-makers make informed choices about the provisions of services, capital assets, and to promote stakeholder participation. So I give you the opportunity to put out information. That's a pretty broad spectrum. There are a lot of questions that council members should ask when they're looking at a budget. What are the underlying assumptions, such as inflation and interest rates, population changes, grants, billing activity? And all that information was in this document. And it's all done in, in trend analysis, so you can go back and do a five-year trend analysis. Now, the judge mentioned that past history is a better indicator than word of mouth, but past, as any stockbroker will tell you, it's a good indicator, but it's not the absolute decision-making device when it comes to what actually happens, because there are a lot of things that can influence that, such as inflated housing markets, artificially inflated housing markets. So you have to be able to know what the other factors are. What are the three most important problems or opportunities? I listed three opportunities. I didn't really mention any problems. They kind of may involve problems, but they're really opportunities that we have.
I'm gonna interrupt, just for the people at home, to remind them that the budget is on the website.
Right.
And anyone who has a love of numbers, et cetera, please go to your computer and go to the city website and go to tonight's meeting, and there is a paperclip there, something on there that you could click on and see exactly what we see. And we do have this up tonight, but, you know, you can all look at it firsthand. It's open to the public. Thank you for allowing me to say that.
No problem. How does the budget compare to last year's adopted budget? We are actually only partway into the new year, so you can't actually take actuals and do a comparison to the actual budget. But we are below the percentage requirement in the, in the budget year to make sure that we will be below the actual budgeted numbers. So we're confident that we'll be able to make that unless we have a hurricane. What percentage change in the general fund as compared to the last year's adopted budget? That information will be presented. What are the most significant dollar changes? How do recurring revenues compare to reoccurring expenditures? And if you look at the summary page, which has the revenues and the expenditures, you'll note that every year they match up exactly. That's because state statute requires that we be balanced and that we not overtax. So you have to follow exactly along the lines of what's there. How have the general fund balances changed? That information is in there. And multiple different factors, so that you can review it from different categories. They're all in graphs. How have the reserves changed? That's in there. Have any of those, are any of the funds subsidized? What are the capital improvements? How much revenue has increased from last year's adopted budget? What budgetary policy limits have been exceeded? And there are none? That's because the governor generally doesn't allow you to do that? What policies have not yet been met? Well, I guess we can discuss that. Is the general fund budget balanced? Yes, it is balanced. That is a state law. Cities aren't allowed to have unbalanced budgets. Is there a deficit in any fund? Why? And the, the only funds that you would note have deficits are, this year, are TITS, and that's because they have beginning balances. And are there any major, are the major revenues estimated conservatively or liberally? And that's a statement right at the beginning, and the city managers address that we conservatively estimate revenues and are, and then liberally expenses. So we run our estimates high, our expenditures high, and our revenues low. The economic assumptions in the budget are one percent interest rate, one and a half percent. Health insurance is five point five, and salary and wages are one and a half. Interest rates are one and a half, and inflation is one. Population growth tends to drive a lot of expenditures, so I do a lot of population estimates. Different forms, so you have all that data available to you to help you make your decision. We go over all the legislative constraints and the opportunities there. Net new construction this year was very good, one point eight eight percent. Guess we'll see what the inflationary impact is, but that's not relevant to the levy. The levy is zero percent plus the net new construction. So the state has sent us that document, and the net new construction and actual numbers was a little over nine million dollars. And there's the history of our net new construction. That's at least ten years. The levy...
I just, what happened in 2014 that made it so high? Do we know?
Yes. You wanna explain, Betsy?
Was that the...
That was a year that they accidentally moved all the TID number four real estate from the Gunlike Development into the regular fund. And so we had a real high one, and then they cut us back down when they moved all the money back to the TID.
Okay. Thank you.
The, the overall tax levy is gonna increase two point eight percent, two point zero eight percent. It's a little about, a little over two percent. Net new construction is one point eight eight. Then we get a couple others, like annexations. You get some revenue from fees that you pay out for town fees, or payments that you have to make to town for annexation. So there, there were several areas where the one point eight eight actually calculates out to a little over two percent. The, the general obligation debt increased by almost twelve percent. Most of that was in relationship to the new street maintenance program. The the most significant advantage of that is next year, this municipal billing gets paid off, and then it drops down, so that if you look at the, what'll happen over the next couple of years, it, it kinda balances out. Expenditure restraint is a program that the state has offered for years. If you keep your increased spending within a certain amount, which is the sixty percent of the net new construction, plus some calculated interest rate provided by the Department of Administration, which looks like it's gonna be about almost two percent. I think it might be two point two percent or something like that. But our, our budget expenses are over that again this year, so we're not gonna make expenditure restraint, which would pay out in 2019.
Is there anything that can be done so that we can meet the expenditure restraint?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
The overall budget went up from 2017 to 2018 at three point eight eight percent. And as you remember, that debt is included as a revenue, and then the processes are also included, the capital improvements are also included as expenses, so that's what's pushing that up. It goes into all the kinds of state mandates that we have to discuss, and so, you know, like, there are certain types of projects and things that we're involved in, so like weights and measures, animal control, those are all state mandated projects. There are a lot of things that we have to do that are state mandated on us, that we have to do whether we raise the money or not. How we can raise fees and can't raise fees are mandated. So if we decide to implement new fees, if any part of that came out of the general fund, we have to cut the general fund by that amount. So there are all kinds of these rules and regulations that are in the state statutes that we have to follow and try and stay within the constraints. Yard, recycling yard waste is some, personal computer tax is another, manufacturing reimbursements. So they're all there. It's a long list. It's a pretty substantial amount of activity that we're involved in as a requirement of the state. Again, there are the flat numbers. The budget is going to be five million. The general budgets are gonna be five million two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And the expenses are the exact same, as I mentioned before. That includes special revenue funds, debt funds, trust funds. So it's, it's a little bit more expansive than just the operations of, you know, like police, fire, streets, those types of activities. Covers a lot broader spectrum than, than just that. The proposed property tax in 2017 was three point eight eight. This year, it's gonna be four million ninety-one thousand, which is a five point three eight percent property tax increase. I shouldn't say a property tax increase, it's a property tax levy increase. So the levy's going up by that much. It doesn't necessarily mean that the property taxes are going up by that much. In fact, it's, it's an odd calculation. When you look at the, the amount that the equalized assessed value went up, it was one point, the equalized assessed value went up so much that the tax, that the tax rate changed one point three three percent. And so the average home is gonna pay about forty-seven dollars more in 2018 than they did in seventeen. So while it sounds like a lot, it doesn't calculate out quite the same. The general and capital levies are proposed to increase two point zero eight percent. The debt fund levy increased, we've already gone over that. The capital budget increased significantly from thirteen thousand to twenty-eight thousand. So when you do it in percentages, it's over a hundred percent, but it's not a lot of money. And the tax rate went from three, eight thirty-nine to eight fifty. And the tax rate went from 8.39 to 8.50, which is $47 for the average home.
The capital budget levy increase looks big on paper that we just looked at. What's the reality of that?
The amount of funds that we had that we wanted to put into the capital fund, the capital fund is everything that we're building. So we have about, what, $9, $10 million worth of capital improvements next year. But we're only taking $30,000 essentially of property tax and putting it in. And the rest of it we're borrowing and putting on the levy. So you try and move everything you can in there to cover items that aren't maybe long-term. You know, when we looked at our debt and set it up, we do some of it at seven years, some of it at 10 years and some of it at 15 years, depending on the life of each piece of the project. Some of it is probably stuff that shouldn't even be borrowed for. So we try and put as much money in there as we can to cover those issues. So last year it was $13,000, but this year we're trying to kick it up to almost 30, 20. So while it looks like a huge percentage, it's actually just a fraction of the overall budget.
And it's because we're kind of cleaning, again, some housekeeping stuff that maybe was in borrowing that shouldn't have been in borrowing?
No, it's not that. It's that we have a lot of borrowing that's going on. And so we're trying to put as much money into that fund as we can find. So we prefer to borrow less. So every penny we can get in there that we don't have to borrow is better.
So for that money that's increased there, someplace else went down in the budget?
Yes, the debt.
Okay, gotcha.
For every penny that goes into that capital account, it reduces the amount of money we have to borrow.
Okay.
This one is deficit. And what we mean by deficit is, at the end of each year, we take how much revenue we brought in and how much expenses we had. And then that leftover is called the surplus or deficit. So you can see most years we have a surplus. One year we did have a deficit.
Was that the year of the the bridge and all the roadwork that we didn't expect?
No. It ended up the year where they made the mistake in the TID district. Because if you remember, we took a bunch of money from our general fund to cover the losses that we had in the TID because we didn't get the money we were anticipating. So we moved $400,000 from our general fund into that TID to cover the costs that we had that year, which is now being paid back. That's one of the reasons why.
Because that was an error, wasn't it?
Right, it was an error, which has since been corrected. So now that fund is generating the money we anticipated it was going to generate. It can cover its own costs, so.
At what level was that error made? Was it us that made that error?
It could have been the assessor and it could have been the county and it could have been the state. We haven't narrowed that down. We just were happy to have, we just were happy to have someone say, yeah, it was a mistake. And Betsy, I said to Betsy, there's something wrong here. And she dug into it and she got it corrected.
Earned your salary that time.
And so we were able to come out of it. But that's the one year that we had the deficit. Now, we did, in the early 2000s, we used to have a lot of deficits in the fund too. A very similar situation. We had a lot of new developments. And we paid our engineers to review all the subdividers work. And they were doing a lot of review on the development. And eventually we pulled that in and made the developers pay for all the reviews. Cut down on the number of reviews and it also significantly reduced our cost in development. But recently, even in the Great Recession, we didn't have any significant, except for '14, which was an error, we didn't have any deficits. This is our cash balance throughout the course of the year in 2016. And it kind of gives you an idea of why we maintain. At the end of each year, our surplus goes into what we call an unreserved fund balance. And the unreserved fund balance is put in place to protect us from what we call shock. So that, you know, if there's some event like a hurricane or a tornado or, you know, some big event that we have the cash in hand to handle it. One of those types of shocks is a state highway project. They require us to pay upfront for all this activity and then they reimburse us. So right now we probably have, or will have, over $400,000 in property acquisition for South Main Street. Now, we'll get that money back, but it takes a little bit of time. So, and our money comes in in two primary phases. December, when everyone pays the bulk of their property taxes. And then generally sometime around July, when final property tax payments are made and the state budget, the state's fiscal year starts in July. So we get a lot of our state aids in July, the bulk of our state aids in July. So if you look, you can see how that goes up and down. January, we have the money that we're collecting and that we have collected from December. And then we start paying that out and we run our operations. And then we get that little bit back in July. And then we start going back down to the end of the year and then we come back up. So you can see how, that's pretty much as consistent almost 95% of the time on our annual, if you look at our annual budgets, our annual cash balances, that's the way it would look. Property tax is our most significant revenue. And so you can see that our property tax revenues have been increasing. 2012, our property taxes bottomed out from the Great Recession. And they have since been rebounding. '15 was a little slow, but '16 made up for it. '17 looks like it's going to be as good, if not, well, it is $2 million better than, at least.
Is that because of new developments, new building?
From 2010 till 2012, it had to do with the sale of new homes. The value of property went down. And even though it had started in like 2008, the sale of homes is kind of slow and it takes a while to get through the process. So for us, it didn't really hit until 2010. And then even though supposedly in 2010, 2011, the economy had already rebounded, we didn't really see it until '12, '13, really '13. Again, because the sale of homes and all the information, basically what we're functioning on is the homes sold in 2000 and built in 2016 are going to be certified as the final for 2017 and then what the property taxes are levied against in '18. So you're always several years behind in how that works. So when you're looking at what the real economy is doing in conjunction to what property taxes are doing, we're always several years behind. So if you read that memo, it goes into the difference between like sales tax and income tax versus property tax. They're very elastic. They respond very quickly to economic changes. Property tax is very inelastic, it's slow, takes a long time to work its way through and actually affect us. So from that standpoint, when you look at this, you can almost track about three years behind on what the actual impact was in the rest of the economy. This is the same, this is per capita. This is the actual revenues in 2016. So the blue line, the orange line, the orange flat line is what was budgeted. The blue line is what was actually brought in. Then the difference between the orange line, and I think it's a green line, although it looks kind of blue up there that are flat, is the capital improvement ones. So all the debt that was borrowed becomes the difference between those two lines. And then you can see that the total revenues brought into the general fund was slightly greater, that's the green line, slightly greater than what we had budgeted. So from a revenue standpoint, 2016, we did okay. Cities have to pay for all the assessment, except for manufacturing. And even some manufacturing assessments we have to do. It depends on whether the state determines they need to assess it or not. The property tax, every time you make an exception to the property tax, like a change in the ag rate or breaks for veterans or breaks for certain other types of activities, like the purchasing of computer equipment, shifts the tax burden, just like dark stores. It's not that the levy goes away or the demand for that money goes away. It just shifts who pays it. So if, let's say like in the dark stores, they get a reduction in their assessed value because someone determines that it was inappropriately assessed. All that tax burden now shifts to everybody else in the city. It's not like it goes away, it just shifts. And so there are lots of methods for shifting it. And it becomes a lot of, there's a lot of unfair flagellation going on in the tax system. And most of it's getting shifted on to residential, single-family homes. And so when people who own homes think that their taxes are going up, they're at a significantly faster rate. It doesn't have to do with the levy of the city. It has to do with how the property taxes are being shifted in the legislature. And that's kind of the problem that we face is that we only get to assign the levy. We don't get to assign who pays for it, who doesn't. That's all done at the state legislative level.
The state hasn't completed their budget yet.
No, they have not.
And do we know whether or not the dark buildings amendment thing went through? That we wanted to have it, so it wasn't hurting us so much?
It has not yet. Neither of the bills have passed yet, but there hasn't been a vote on them yet.
Okay, so they're still out there on the table?
There was a hearing last week too, in front of a different commission.
I lost track of that one.
From our standpoint, the Constitution has read that every property has to pay the tax rate as levied against their assessed value. So when assessed value is set and then we do our levy, that calculation of what the rate is then goes across to everybody. And they are supposed to pay fairly so that we can't say, well, your tax, the tax rate for commercials is going to be this and the tax rate for industrial is going to be this. And that's not allowed by Constitution. So when you see the shifting, it's generally at the legislative level based on their declaration of what's fair or not fair in the statewide impact. This is a number that comes out of the Municipal Facts, which is a report written by WIS Tax for the legal Wisconsin municipalities. And statewide, generally about 64% of the revenue cities bring in our property taxes. And then they divide them up into, you know, other categories there. You'll look at ours down the way. And I list mine in two separate categories for property taxes. There's, I call one a property tax and then I call another one other taxes. But the state actually puts theirs into, or the report actually just puts all theirs into the one category as property taxes. So if you see 64 here and you see 50 in ours, they're not exactly the same. They're actually 64 and 60. This is the summary page that I was discussing earlier. It lists 2017 budget and 2018. And then down, those are revenues and these are expenses. And then it goes through each one of them. So you'll see the general fund, you'll see the special revenue fund, you'll see the debt service fund, the capital projects fund, which is, in our budgets, is all TIDS. Then you'll see the capital budget, trust funds and utilities. And those are all incorporated into that. And they show the revenues on the top and the expenses on the bottom. So you'll note that the only one that I saw that had a deficit, as mentioned earlier, was the capital projects funds. Again, for those, the general fund accounts for most of the financial activities that the government provides. So it covers for police, fire, courts, the legal activities, the administrative activities, the financial activities, parks and recreation, forestry, facilities management, HR, the whole spectrum that we provide, libraries, those are all incorporated into the general fund. Here's the one I was talking about with the revenues. It gives 50% for the property tax and then here it lists other taxes. They're actually still property taxes, they're just a different type. So if you look in our revenue sources, they're all listed in the property tax one. But I break them out separate for my information so that when you look at that, what is actually the levy, which is $4,091,000, that's just 51% or 50. Revenue gains are utility taxes, intergovernmental aids, intergovernmental charges and public charges. So some of it was just bringing up to date what's been going on. And over the last several years, some of it has to do with the changes in the amount of improvement in the utility properties. So there's a lot of new electric power lines and new buildings, those types of stuff that they own, that changes that. The fire charges are going to go up because we have additional charges. So it goes out to all the towns and debt and those types of things. TID reimbursements is going down each year as they get to the point where they've paid us off and they no longer owe us any money. The city's general fund, for two funds, TID number two and TID number four, put some money into that, as discussed earlier. We put $400,000 into TID number four and '14 to cover the problem with the property assessments. And then when we did TID number two... And then, when we did TID number two, as a build-in, they'll come, how to pay as you go, most of our TIDS have been pay-as-you-go. This one is one where you build everything, and then you have property available that they can buy then. And so, we invested a little over two and a half million dollars upfront, of which I'll go over a little bit later, but the TID has actually paid us down now, over the years, to the point where they only owe us about four hundred thousand dollars. TID number two, TID number four actually probably only end up owing the city about a hundred thousand dollars after this year. So, it's gone pretty fast, TID number four is actually doing some, doing pretty well. We do charge fees for certain types of activities in the city. We, you know, developers and user fees, administration fees for like conditionally used permits, and certain types of planning and zoning activities. We charge for refuse collection, private streetlights, street tree planting, we do charge developers for that. This budget does have a special assessment project proposed in it, and that's American Way, from Industrial Drive all the way out to Harvey Road. That does involve one property owner. And as typical, we'll have to look at our refuse and recycling fees, based on John's contract and what they propose doing. We should be getting a letter from them anytime. I did put in a one and a half percent increase in there. I guess we'll see what John's does. I haven't heard anything from the state, but it looked like they were going to continue to provide recycle, recycling funds, similar to what they did last year, which was better than the year before. The single largest capital outlay for us next year will be South Main Street. We have to pay for the parking lane that we have put in. We have to pay for the streetlights, the decorative streetlights that we're having put in. We don't have to pay all the costs, they reimburse us for some of the streetlights that were already there, and they they gave us some funny money for decorative or aesthetic purposes, to help make the street look better. We are also putting in at least one rectangular reflective flashing beacon, we may be putting in two. We've had a request from Governor Scott Fitzgerald's office to put one in at Water in Maine.
Where's the other one?
The other one's going to be down at Catlin in Maine, at the high school.
I remember.
And all those are laid out in that agreement that we have with the state as to what our costs, what our share of the costs will be. The street portion of the project is actually significantly funded by the state than the feds. Our portion was, I think, just slightly over five hundred thousand dollars, which isn't bad for a mile and a half street project. Our real cost, and that will be in the utilities, where water will be about one and a half million, and sewer will be about one point eight million dollars. So, that'll be, there'll be some significant costs there. We'll be doing a significant street maintenance project next year. That'll be presented at the Public Works Board meeting next week. Our anticipation is, is that we have gotten a lot of the streets sealed now, with crack sealing and oil and chip, although it's not done yet, so I'm not going to guarantee that. It's getting kind of late in the year. All contractors are running behind. But if we get all the streets cracked seal and the oil and chip down, we will have the vast majority of our streets that need it. We don't want to do anything south of Lake Street next year because of the issue with South Main Street and all the traffic moving back and forth in that area, trying to keep it as efficient as possible, not having streets closed off with construction. So, everything next year will be north of Lake Street, and it looks like most of it is going to be mill and overlay, or scratch and overlay. Be a lot less oil and chip, just because there's, we've oil and shipped so much in the last two years that there's not a lot left. Now, the the next two years, it'll start to ramp up a little bit, and as it gets out there, some of the streets that we've constructed will then demand more. So, like a mill and overlay street that we did seven years ago will require oil and chip at that seven-year time period. So, it'll kind of slump off and then come back up a little bit. So, we'll, we're blending and mixing the mills and overlays with the oil and chip over the next several years to balance it out. All the budgets are done in a five-year cycle, so all the capital budgets are laid out for a five-year period. So, you can see actually what we did last year, and then what we proposed for this year, and then the next four years. So, it's all there in a six-year plan. One of the toughest ones to have to deal with is the lead service laterals, because that's kind of driven by finding them and property owners' demand. So, if a property owner says, "I'm replacing mine now, and you have to replace yours now", we could be digging up a brand-new street to replace the lead lateral service that got found, and the homeowner is demanding that that be replaced right away, which we suggest they do. On the other hand, we've been working pretty hard to try and find them and get them scheduled in, so that we know that we get the majority of them done before we actually do the street work, but that's kind of outside our ability to control. So, if people are saying, "Well, they just fixed that street, and they're digging a hole in it", you at least know why. For economic development, I think American Way, if you look at that, if we push that through, I think that'll help. We are putting together a new industrial park proposal, which we will discuss with you in executive session at some point. TID number eight, which is an extension of TID number four, under the north side of the interstate. And then, the Sandy Beach restaurant market study is out. It won't be relevant for the 2018 budget, but it will start forcing us to focus and do some strategic planning around what we've decided out of that report. The other report that we have coming out, that I'm not sure, I stretched it out a little bit further, was the Mill Pond Planning Study. And that should be done in January or February. But that'll probably push into nineteen or twenty before we actually do any work on that area. Economic development has been a strategic goal, and we have amended TID number two to provide more incentives. TID number five has been redone. TID number five will start to take more attention as the South Main Street project comes to an end, because there's probably, you're going to probably start to see, with the new water and sewer down there, you're probably going to see some residential development on the south side, so that mixed-use portion of that TID will probably kick into place. There's also been some proposals on some new buildings in that intersection there, so there's the potential for some development in that one. TID number six, we amended it to, again, allow for more incentives, and to put together some other land options. I don't know that they're in the best location right now, but one of them would be like submitting the wetland studies for that twenty-six acres in the industrial park. As we've gotten to the south end of that industrial park, the amount of wetlands has become much more of an issue. And so, for us to be able to have those market-ready, they have to have all the wetland studies done and everything in place with a footprint, so that when someone does want to build there, they can just, it's shovel-ready. And we have completed the environmental remediation on the Crepacka North property. They actually have filed and accepted the closure on that one. The aggressive metals portion will not be for another year, because they have to do well monitoring and vapor monitoring in the building. But that should be coming up here at the end of this year. When people pay their property taxes here, there is more than just the city of Lake Mills involved. Lake Mills is involved, there's a school district, there's a county, there's a state, there's M A T C. We're about, this year will be about thirty-seven percent of that, which is as high as we've been in a while, but we've also been very active in a lot of areas. The last time we did a revale was in 2011, 2010? I think it was 2010, which went into effect in 2011. We stayed right around the one, the utilization ratio, which means that we don't have to make any adjustments in our assessments. The requirement is, is that once you get above one point three or below ninety, you have to do a revale. But we haven't been, we haven't had that issue for ten years. The city's portion of the tax bill will be one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars, minus the tax credits, which take us down to about twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And if you divide that over twelve months, that's a hundred and four dollars a month, which if you compare, a lot of people pay that for their cable TV, or their telephone, or some other item. In this case, you're getting police, fire, ambulance, financial, legislative, legal, parks, cemetery, streets, animal control, library records management, bookkeeping, and a host of other services. So, if you compare it to just your phone, that's not much of a comparison, I don't believe, but at least you know that you're getting a pretty good bang for your buck when you're paying your taxes. This is the breakdown in the levies, so the yellow is M A T C, the red is Lake Mills School District, the green is the city of Lake Mills, the purple is Jefferson County, and then the one that you can't see, but it's a blue, is the state of Wisconsin. Now, this gives you a trend line for what the city of Lake Mills has done over the last five years, and you can see that it's remained pretty flat. It goes over all the operations that are in the general fund, and then it goes into how much is spent in each category. The capital outlay obviously makes us, all the rest of them, look great. But you can see that, that most of ours is spent in police and streets, and then the capital outlay. Health insurance is going to be an issue in 2018. We will probably be asking you to make, pass a resolution at your next council meeting, dealing with dropping out of the state plan. And yes, we've got you covered. We have gotten a pretty good proposal through the Consortium of Jefferson and Dodge County, and a bunch of those municipalities. Unity has put together a proposal that we feel is as good as we're going to see in a while, and gives us a lock-in for a three-year time period. So, we feel that we're going to be in pretty good shape there. The cost of debt, we've been waiting for that to go up, it's creeped up and then dropped back down. We've been kind of fishing every year to make sure that we issue our debt at the lowest cost period in each year. We've been staying pretty low. I think we've seen them as low as below one percent and up to three. But when you blend it out, it's generally about one and a half to one point nine for debt, which makes it pretty hard not to borrow, because it's hard to get money at that cost. Yard waste, we still don't have a lot of significant cost in yard waste, other than we have had more people dumping some hazardous materials on us. So, we've had a lot of cost in disposal of hazardous materials.
What form is that coming in?
Shingles, insulation,
Like asbestos?
Yep, asbestos being the main disposal cost. So, as, from that standpoint, it's gotten, it's cost us more this year than it has historically. But the cost of hauling it to the Conservation Club and disposing of it there just costs us the time to haul it, and then the time to bury it, because we're required by the, it's actually not the Conservation Club anymore, I shouldn't call it that, it's the county, it's the county sheriff's department. But that is starting to fill in. So, last year, actually this year, we approved a composting study, which is being completed, we hope to see sometime around the end of the year. And they'll have some proposals in there for us on how to handle composting, so that we can shift from there, from just burying it at the county sheriff's department site there, to actually doing composting. This is almost the exact same chart, except for expenses, as the revenue one. So, you can look at the general fund budget, and then the general fund budget plus the capital budget, and then you can see the expense categories. So, we kept our expenses right at the budgeted item, but our revenues had been a little bit higher, so we actually had a little bit of surplus, which is consistent with your revenues are budgeted low and your expenses are budgeted high. So, we ended up with a little bit more of revenue than we anticipated, and our expenses hit right on the button. This is expenses by department. Again, public safety is all three, actually all four departments put together. So, you have police, fire, EMS, and building inspection. That falls into the public safety category. EMS runs about thirty thousand dollars for us. Building inspection runs about seventy-five thousand dollars, and then the rest is between police and fire, with police being about one point, almost one point two million dollars, which is the largest portion of that, our budget by far.
The library, eight percent, is just the amount that the city contributes?
No, that's the full cost of the library, that's all revenues and expenses. Same for all departments, so like in administration, that includes all the charges that we charge developers and the expenses associated with it. an administration that includes all the charges that we charge developers and the expenses associated with it. So, administration would be a lot smaller if it, if it didn't have some of those other categories, like the planning and zoning category, the cable TV category, and the, the, uh, public health. And this is expenditures per capita. And you can see that they were, they were dropping, and then we went up, and the increase was the, in two thousand and fifteen, when we actually made the borrowing to start the, the maintenance projects that are now in place, the street maintenance projects that are now in place, uh, that's when that hit, along with the, the parks building. The modifications of the public works building for the park, parks portion of the building. That'll flatten out as this building is paid off, and I assume that the only, capital building project we have left is the library.
And then we're looking down the road at a multi-use building?
Yes, yeah, and while, and you know, we have a couple of other ones, but, uh, like the restaurant down at Sandy Beach, that would pay for itself. Um, so there are some in there that don't actually hit the, the expenditures per, they hit the expenditures per capita, but they don't actually hit the tax levy, so we have a lot of that, so. We have one contract, union contract, and that's the police department. Uh, they are budgeted in at a one percent in two thousand and eighteen, so we'll have to do an opener to allow them to go to one and a half. This is the employee, uh, positions per thousand, so you can see that we had a declining, number of employees, uh, per capita for a long time. We had a slight increase in the last two years. But we've had some lumpiness, some of that was, uh, parks, one was in the parks, and actually all of them were in the parks department, or grounds and facilities, because they were two janitors and a parks employee.
Two thousand and eleven was the year we restructured, right?
Yep. That was the year that, um, um, the Great Recession hit us the hardest. And we restructured and, and eliminated several department head positions, and, and went with a, more of a matrix type, type of system. You didn't have a foreman, or a board group, and, and, uh, you didn't have every department, every utility with a, a, uh, department head, a director's position. Used to be electric had one, wastewater had one, water had one, electric, and now you just have the one. But we, we reduced, through attrition, we reduced in the street department too, because in two, when I got here in two thousand and, in two thousand, uh, we had eleven street department laborers or employees in that department. We now have seven. So that one's also substantially gone down.
I don't think that's something the general public is aware of.
We went down to the number that we, we did a calculation on, absolutely, how many people we had to have to do snowplowing in the wintertime to meet the requirements that were in place by the city council. So there's a, there's a full logic model and, uh, swim chart on how to go through that process and what we had to have in order to be able to hit those targets that were laid out by the city council, and then we, we did a, a calculation of how many employees and, and how we could make the routes more efficient and those types of things. So we, we did a pretty substantial amount of work at that time period to be able to bring down to what we considered was the, the key, um, work task that that department did, which was snowplowing. And then we could structure around that. And we did a lot of shifting at that time, we, we used to do a lot more of our own construction in the summertime. And now we just, very little of our own construction, mainly maintenance, we pretty much do all our, our, um, construction out. And even, even some of our maintenance, we contract out, you know, like, we did as much crack sealing as we could. When we ran out of time, we went to Thunder Road, they picked it up for us before Scott'll come in and do the, uh, the oil and chip, so. And then our guys will shift to another category, those types of things, so we, our guys are more of an insurance policy, they're not really a full construction streaker. Special revenue funds. Um, our special revenue and funds include special assessment, park improvement, revolving loan, and sanitation. And each one of those is a setup, it's a separate fund balance. And you can check in each one of the budgets, they bring in a certain amount of revenue, they have a certain amount of expenses, they actually have a beginning and an ending balance under, unlike the general fund. The only one that probably doesn't meet, have a balancing set of reven, uh, fees and, and, uh, expenses of sanitation, and that one is because we get a grant for a certain amount of recycling, so. Our fees are slightly less than what our expenditures are in that department. And that's how each one of those departments breaks out. In that category of special revenue funds. The next one is debt service, and that, all that is, 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 uh, the principal and interest payments on each budget, so that's what this one's projecting at. In two thousand and eighteen, TIDS are the big one. And they're the capital projects ones, and, uh, we have six TIDS currently, no, I take that back, we have five TIDS currently. We have TID two, TID three, TID four, TID five, and TID six. TID one was a downtown TID, uh, done in the early nineties. And has been out, well, I shouldn't say that, probably done before the early nineties, because it, I think it was paid out in the early nineties. Kind of gone over what we've done in, in the TIDS in the last couple of years. Now, we bought an additional sixty-three acres in TID number two. Uh, we extended Birch and Elm Street in TID number four. TID number five and TID number six are currently negative, but we don't have any expenditures in there. TID number three, the only expenditures we've had are, uh, some capital improvements in water and sewer on Jefferson Street associated with, uh, chapter two, and then all the environmental remediation at, uh, Crepacka North and, and, uh, aggressive metals.
I just wanna comment that both Birch and Elm Street are getting a lot of use.
Yeah, they, they have their advantages.
Um, I noticed a lot of traffic from Culvers goes out Elm Street, and then, disperses down and then moves back into Main Street. But it helps a lot if we didn't have that, all of those cars would be coming out into the Walgreens intersection, which would have been really bad. But people are dispersing themselves.
Same with the school?
Yes. Same with the school, mhm, so that, those were two really good moves that we made.
This lists each type of TID and, uh, how long they're available for, so. Like TID two is an industrial TID. It was done in ninety-eight, it has twenty-three years. Uh, CPN is a, uh, blight TID, has twenty-seven years from its inception, which was two thousand and six, TID four, same way. It's a mixed use, so it has twenty years. Uh, Main Street rehabilitation, which is, uh, TID number five is a rehabilitation TID and, and has twenty-seven years. And then, uh, TID number six, which is a, um, an overlay on TID number two with some expansion, was again an industrial park TID with twenty years. And we made, you know, s, each one of the TIDS has generated additional income. Each one of them has had growth in their increments. And it goes through each one of those, now, TID five and TID six, it lists there that, that each one of them had some negative growth. Because we don't have any debt that doesn't pay anything in, so it's, it's not like any loss to us, if we, and if we do what we consistently have done in the past, which is a pay-as-you-go, they would have to come in and generate a certain amount of new increment before we would provide any benefit to them. This is what TID number two looked like. So as you can see, when it was originally started, we had a negative increment. What happened there was, that was at a time when Crepacka's increment was dropping pretty substantially. And there was a debate whether we should put, uh, a, actually, I should call it APV, which was this big blue out at the corner of CP and Lake Street, East Lake Street, their assessed value was coming down pretty hard. And, um, it actually took us three million dollars to the negative at one point in time. And so there, there had been a lot of debate as to whether we should put that in or not, and that was, you know, discussed, well, how would we get it redeveloped? If we didn't have it, uh, didn't seem to play into it at all in the long run. But over the years, the TID has grown and, and we've seen substantial, so the green is the increment, which is the cash generators. And it's grown substantially, um, over the years, and, and the TID has paid off. Uh, so we'll be, we'll be in good shape on TID number two. TID number three is, um, hasn't had as much, uh, revenue growth, but it has had some. We actually have a positive cash balance in TID number three. Even with the projects that we've done over the years, I think we have one more payment on a water project in TID number? Yeah, not a water project, a, uh, an environmental review project. That was the, uh, remediation plan. Which has now been complete. That's TID number four. And you can see that in fourteen, there was supposed to be a lot of growth in TID number four, and there wasn't, and it stayed flat in two thousand and, in, uh, fifteen. And then what had been in the other one got moved into this one. So we had a big revenue jump. So that was the, so if you, if you take this one and you take the other one that you're asking about, those two tie together. Here's TID number, um, five, and you can see that it, it's had negative increment, and actually this year's just about zero. I think it's twenty-five thousand dollar. TID number six, uh, kind of the same way, it's had some negative increment, it's, it's not substantial now, but it's, it's still, still a substantial impact in the, in the, uh, TID. Mainly because it's all farm ground. Hopefully, when we get this, um, wetland survey done and we can finalize that in American way pushed through, that'll impact this, and we'll be able to have some more, uh, revenues generated there. I suppose you were all waiting for this. Uh, the council does not set or establish a tax rate. The council approves and adopts an annual city budget and tax levy. The levy's applied against the assessed value, and that produces a tax rate. And then the tax rate is applied against each property owner's property. You should note in the budget that while we had a little over nine million dollars in net new construction, the assessed value actually grew by over six percent, almost seven percent. So we went from five hundred and four million dollars to five hun, or no, five hundred and eleven million dollars to five hundred and forty-three million dollars of assessed value. So that, that impacts, if you take the levy and apply it to the, the, uh, assessed value, that gives you your tax rate, because the levy, the assessed value went up so much, the tax rate didn't actually change that much. So it's a three-legged stool, you kind of have to take all three of those and try and figure out how they blend together, so depending on how your property falls into the assessment changes, and then against the rate, we'll determine more about how your, what your actual taxes are than, than any assumption that's made here. Uh, we, we take a general assumption and apply it across the board, but that's, what you're gonna wanna know is how your assessed value is individually as a property owner, and then look at the rate. With an approved tax levy, the state creates a formula, and that develops the tax rates. What we're looking at is about a one point three-three percent increase in our, uh, assumptions. There's no action tonight on the budget or the levy. This is just informational. The budget and the levy are tentative, they're scheduled for final approval on Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, after much vetting by the city council, because this is just their first few of this, just like everybody else. The final budget and tax levy needs to be in full compliance with all state laws. The budget has become very complex and a delicate balancing act between the cost increases, state laws, service levels, and future needs of the city beyond two thousand and eighteen. That's why we do all of ours on a, basically a six-year plan for the last sixteen, seventeen, and then out. We try and make sure that we don't make any changes in this fiscal year that would have significant impact on us in the future, so. Just because we may have revenues this year, we may not have it in the future. You have to look at how each one of those, uh, expense increases, if they're permanent increase in that expense, how they'll play out in the future. As a reminder, the council has no control, responsibility, or authority over the schools, M A T C, or Jefferson County, or the state. In fact, uh, it's exactly the opposite with the state, they tell us what to do, so. Are there any other questions?
Well, when we have our work sessions, which we'll discuss in just a minute, then we'll be looking at each of the departments specifically, and changes, and so forth, correct?
There, there are several other documents provided in the, on the website that you have available to you. One is the, the, um, address, and it goes through and, and gives you a history of everything. And then it gives you, um, every strap of, of, um, it gives you the calendar for how this will be completed. What's, what our timeline is over the next several months. It, uh, It talks about the economic situation in the state and the city. It goes over all the data that, a lot of the data that you've already reviewed, but it also provides a lot more. This is, there's, as Dan says, more information than you will want to digest in a year. And it talks about, you know, what the significant changes were in the budget and what the impacts are. So, this document does a lot of comparisons. Gives you an idea of what I thought in your direction has been over the last several years and what the comprehensive plan says. And then it makes a recommendation at the end. Talks about the comprehensive plan and a recommendation at the end. Then you have the actual general fund budget, which is a hundred and sixty-six pages. Or I should say, general budgets. There's more than that in there than just the general fund. But there's a hundred and sixty-six pages to this one. I think there were forty-seven pages in the address. And then there's another twenty-five pages in the utilities budgets. So, there is a substantial amount of information in there. You'll want to note, for people who've been here in the past, that there was a substantial change in the line items in the utilities. I don't know if anybody caught that. Betsy and I did a lot of work. We tried to line it up more with the Public Service Commission reports.
Oh, good.
So that they're more consistent informational reporting, so that you can kind of compare your actual budget to the Public Service Commission reports.
Thank you for doing that.
You know, charts about... In, in the utilities, there's a lot more fund balance issue, you know? Because they're, they're monthly revenues and expenses. And even though we kind of put together a budget, the utilities are much more consumer-driven. So, like, if we have a new business coming into town, we have to provide them with a new transformer and stuff, there could be, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars' worth of expenses. Or let's say a Vita Plus makes a change to their operations, and they put in some new motors, and we have to put in some new transformers, or they change their electric service type, we have to put in a bunch of new equipment, those make changes. Like I said, in the, in the lead lateral services, if the homeowner wants to change theirs, we have to change ours. That drives the water expenses. That's not something we can say, no, we have to provide that. And as my consent order tells me, I don't have any option. So, we're going to suck up that expense whether we have the money or not. So, those are the types of things that we, we tend to pay a little bit closer attention to those as we go through the course of the year, because general fund budgets tend to follow really close. The utility budgets do not. And so, you, those, that type of information is a little bit provided here, so you got some of those, that data. And you got it for all of them. You got your all your debt information, all that type of stuff for all of them. So, you can go ahead and check your debt margin in the general fund. You can check your debt in the utilities. Any piece of information is available in there if you understand how the budgets are are fashioned. Because we, we have, at the front, we have all the revenues, and then each department's expenses, and we have a summary of the expenses, and then we have each one of the categories. So, you know, you'll see their, all their payroll expenses, and behind that, you'll see the employees, not the employees, but the positions listed. Then behind that, you'll see your operational. And then you might see, in some budgets, we have minor capital, which is under five thousand dollars. Those will stay in the operations budgets. Anything that's over five thousand dollars goes into the capital budget. That goes way to the rear. So, it, it takes a little bit of experience and a little bit of knowledge to follow exactly how our budget is constructed. It's just, it's not consistent with our revi... it's not consistent with the business style.
So, now we need to look at when we want to do our budget. Work sessions and our goals work session. Can I, do I have to do something? And we're, we're actually moving to number nine, right?
Yeah, it should be the, any other meetings?
Yeah, the future agendas.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Did you, you were going to check on some dates for the goals thing. Did you find out anything further on that?
They're pretty available in September, so they were kind of looking to see what we wanted to do. I kind of told them to schedule for the nineteenth, but that we might do something in or out of that meeting.
Well, we need a full night to do goals, I think, without anything else, don't you think? Or, or do we have an extremely light meeting that night?
Yeah, I don't know right now. I... It depends on if you want to do a goal-setting session and have budgets after that, or just...
No, I think one a night is enough. My brain, I don't think so.
I thought, this isn't highly entertaining?
Pardon me?
This wasn't highly entertaining?
I thought it was, Steve.
Thanks.
Which, which should we be doing first? The goals or the budget night? Is it up to us?
Yeah, why not?
Okay, just asking. Now, we have to get the budget done by November third?
I think it's November fifth, isn't it?
Fifth. Oh, no, that's a Sunday. Seven?
Yep, the seventh.
Okay, so that's a... So...
Oh, we have a fifth Tuesday in October.
Mm-hmm.
That's helpful.
Yeah, but that's kind of a...
It's kind of late, but maybe that would be a good time to be doing the strategic planning.
The goals?
Oh, it's Halloween.
It's Halloween, yeah.
People are going to be busy with that.
Not me.
I'm not, but...
I'm not.
I'm not.
They're all gone. My little guy's in the army.
Okay, and you, your kids are not affected. So, we could do it thirty-first if we...
Maybe that wouldn't be our initial goal-setting, but maybe we could finish it that night or something. Because is the goal-setting something that needs to be done along with the budget, or are they totally separate?
Totally separate.
Okay. Well, maybe because the budget, we have time constraints, maybe we should nail down some times for that.
Sure.
Six o'clock work sessions have generally worked well in the past. You talked about that there'd be an upcoming close session for something else. Is that something you're intending soon?
If we have a separate budget meeting, I would attach it to that.
Okay.
Because obviously, there would be some negotiating issues involved in that.
Okay, I'm confused. We're, I think we were talking about like a six o'clock budget meeting, but if we have a closed session that needed to be for discussing something, wouldn't that be after the regular meeting?
Yeah, I'm just thinking that it might get to be too long of a night. If we start at six and then we do a closed session after a regular meeting.
Well, if we have a short agenda, it shouldn't be. I think it depends on what's on the agenda.
At the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we agree with that. We have, what, two items right now?
I think I'm going to have three right now.
Yeah, the library elevator, it'll work. We'll probably have the health insurance.
Library bury tax exemption.
Oh, and the library tax exemption.
Really might need to have a tax agreement on there, too.
Well, those all are kind of light items.
Yeah, they're pretty light.
So, so...
It can make a controversy, huh?
We do that at seven o'clock. We should be done before eight, and then we can go into closed session, be out of here by nine.
Yeah, that should work.
I think so. Six o'clock budget, next meeting.
I can do that.
In the nineteenth?
The nineteenth, yes. September nineteenth, six o'clock budget, seven o'clock regular meeting. And after the regular meeting, we'll have a closed session for whatever it is we're having a closed session for. With the idea of maybe being done by nine, if not earlier. Okay, so that would be first budget meeting. And we go to October. Same thing, six o'clock on the third budget. If we don't need it, we don't have. What do you think? Should we schedule another budget on the third?
I think.
Okay, so the third...
I mean, it's a thirty-two million dollar budget. It's kind of hard to absorb it.
Yeah, I think, huh?
Yeah.
Do we need a closed session after that meeting?
No.
Okay. But we do, maybe we do, because it's also, we have to do your evaluation thing. So, at least we have to be getting our packets for that.
Yeah, it's, it's prepared.
I mean, so when do we, what's the timeline? When do we have to...
What I have it scheduled for in the memo I wrote was the first and second Tuesday in December for the closed session meeting and the, the two closed session meetings following the regular council meeting.
I think we need to have the last one, the first meeting in December.
That, that's fine. That's not what was...
And back up everything.
But that's absolutely fine if that's the way you want to do it. So, go the second meeting in November and then the first meeting in December? That's the way we did it the last two times.
Nope, so like the first of November, we get our packets to do...
Well, I'll give you the packets well before that.
Well...
They're, they're prepared, so...
What if, so, you're saying... So, we have a meeting with us alone.
Correct.
And then we have a meeting with Steve.
Correct.
But then, is there another meeting after that, or is that...
No, but we have to have the materials in advance of that first meeting so that we can, so that we can do all of the calculations on how we're going to do the written stuff.
Everybody will have to have them say by the beginning of November completed. They all submit to you as the president. You compile the information. That first session is basically a work session where you all decide exactly what the assessment says, and then go on to presentation.
That actually works pretty well then, because then if we could do that goal-setting thing on the thirty-first.
Are you anticipating more than one meeting for the goal-setting?
I hope not, but it could, yes.
But we could have the first one then, and then if we decided we wanted a second one, we could do it after the holidays in January.
No, I do anticipate we'll do more after the holidays. Over the winter time, I anticipated at least two more.
Goal sessions? Okay, so, okay, so then that would work, then if we did the thirty-first would be our goals. Boy, we got ourselves all booked up here. Okay, so the thirty-first is goals. No, the first meeting in December is evaluation. And then the second one will be on the twenty-first. That would be... Also, Steve.
I thought the way we did it was the second meeting in November would be when you guys meet. And then you would meet with me in the first meeting in December.
I don't want to let it go that far. I want to do beginning of November for us. And then the twenty-first for us to, for us to share with you. And then that gives us enough time. Yeah, I, I would, I would feel more comfortable to do it then, because if something happens...
Are there deer hunters that won't be available that meeting?
Oh, I don't know. Do we have a deer hunting contingent?
I'll be here.
I'll bite his hunt over Thanksgiving, long weekend over Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we're looking at the twenty-first.
Yeah, it should be home.
That's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
It should be home.
Okay. All right, but I, I, I just would feel better if we did it the seventh and the twenty-first. And then if, whatever, then you've got it for the December, you can do... I'm sorry, but that's not, I feel kind of, I feel uncomfortable letting it go to the...
Well, you're probably right, because then after that meeting with Steve is when the council's got to take action on on salary by passing a resolution. So, then we'd be looking at the first meeting in December.
That would be the first meeting in December. We would make the, whatever we decide in the evaluation. Okay, so then that's...
So, the thirty-first is goals?
Yes.
What time?
Six, huh? Or seven? I don't know.
Mike, you make it. You're the one that is...
I would think six o'clock.
Six is fine.
I think, or hey, we could do six-thirty. Does that help?
How about five?
Oh, gosh.
Can't do five.
What about six-thirty? It gives us a half an hour earlier, but it gives it a little...
Sure, six-thirty's fine.
Let's do goals at six-thirty. Yeah, and then...
Is it hard for you to make six o'clock?
No.
Okay.
Say what?
I wondered if it was hard for him with his work to get here by six.
It can be tricky for you, though, isn't it, sometimes, if you're out of town?
Yeah, I'll just try and schedule myself into town.
But six-thirty's better than six.
I'll make it work.
Gives you a little bit, okay, good. And so, then that first meeting in December will be the council action on what we do. Okay, so, any other agenda items that we need to put on the agenda? I'll see none at this time. Let's see if I can find them. Yeah, well, meeting is adjourned.